Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members and city officials. I'd like to, and also our home audience, I'd like to welcome you to our October 9th City Council meeting. We have 11 items on our agenda this evening, so we have a pretty full agenda this evening. At this time, if you would, Mr. Fosson, please call the board of members. Corcoran.
Here.
Florima.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Tattman.
Here.
If everybody would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing afterwards for just a few moments, silence in respect for the people in the massacre in Las Vegas.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a few moments of silence, please. The minutes in the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Florima, seconded by Mrs. Kearney? Roll call on the motion, please.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Prohl.
Here.
Tattman.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and the minutes from the previous meeting have been accepted. At this time, it is, we have reports from the committees. Prior to the meeting, I passed out a list of some of the older assignments that we still have current standing. If you would and could, give us any kind of an update or anything on any of those items would be nice. Any, who wants to start with the report of committees? Mr. Tattman.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
President Arnold.
The Engineering Committee does have two items on the agenda tonight. Number two, it's the placement of three-way stop signs at Second, Marlberry, and Fourth and Walnut, and to appropriate money for the lighted stop signs that will be used in other locations. Also, number seven? No, number eight is close together. Anyhow, final resolution for the city of Chillicothe in a matter of ODOT project for resurface of State Route 59, 159, and within the city limits. Also, Engineering Committee did have a meeting on assignment 17-119, and it's all about bricks. It came to the decision, all council members agreed, that we will let the surface of Second, West Second Street between Walnut and High Street go this year and see how it holds up. We were considering sealing it, hoping not to spend the extra money. And to address your list, I see I made it. 16-136, it's the vacate alley and dedicate property at Bridge and Water, and that's the Norris property. I never received a letter, and I believe Mr. Fosson brought this up, that they had, he had permission, or he had told the neighbors, the neighbor in the property, that he wanted to vacate this alley, and I have never received anything on that one. 17-056, and that's the stop signs we're talking about tonight. 17-068, and that's the review sidewalk ordinances, and that is still a work in progress. And I probably will have that maybe after, well, maybe into November, we might get into it again. 17-102, it's contract county, with county for commercial building inspector, and we need to probably get that done before the end of the year. So we will have to have a meeting on that, get that discussed. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Tattman. Anybody of the committee reports at this time? Yes, Mr. Florima.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Services has items nine through 11 for this evening. Nine is to appropriate $25,000 from the Chillicothe Court probation fund to purchase software and implement a new probation program and hire one temporary worker for the initial data entry. This is something that the court needs to get done and would need to get done quickly. Again, this is money from their funds, that's not new appropriations, so at the appropriate time, I wish to waive the three-read rule. Number 10 is the first reading of, to amend section 121.03 and add 121.032 of the codified ordinances to establish combined police and fire dispatch operations composition. We had a meeting on this prior, and we had representatives from both fire and police. Basically, since we've merged, it's worked out rather well, but we need to reflect the number of dispatchers that we're using now, which is seven. We've also added, not to be filled without approval of budget, but there are also some part-time positions that may be able to, in the future, should the need arise, be able to reflect that. That would allow part-time to do the filling as opposed to using full-time police or fire department and allocating proper resources of man call. So that, we're going to read through that this evening. Number 11 is the first reading to provide for an agreement with Ross County Commissioners whereby the city will continue to be eligible through 2018 for statement reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing counsel for illegitimate defendants in criminal cases. This is something that goes on an ongoing basis, is annual. There's no reason to waive the three-read rule and it should go off three reads. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Florima. Yes, Mr. Tattman.
I'm sorry, President Arnold, I must have jet lagged. I went to the Browns' game yesterday and the Jets beat the Browns.
Okay.
Number eight is also mine, it's a, I mean, number seven is also mine. It's the $3,500 for paying the state of Ohio for the building permits that are due.
So you were right to begin, though?
Yes, I was. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tattman.
It's jet lag.
All right. Any other committee reports? Mr. Prohl.
The Finance Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number one, which is a third read, it's an ordinance, a second reading, it's a third read, to appropriate $4,994.50 originally. We made that change to $2,452 last week. At the last meeting, we amended the ordinance, and so section one, it says, changing the amount in the title from, to $2,452, also in the beginning paragraph from section one. This also changes the amount appropriated from the general fund in section one to $1,748.50 ongoing to general fund miscellaneous computer maintenance, and that all goes to getting us on one type of email across the city. It'll get us on that same email posting. So at the appropriate time, I ask for your support on that item. Item number six is also, this is a first read, it is to appropriate $51,000 from unappropriated general fund and $14,000 from unappropriated street construction maintenance to pay various bills. And when we met about this, we were all in agreement that we wanted to make sure we got all of these bills caught up before the end of the year. So that that can happen, I'm going to ask at the appropriate time that we please waive the three-read rule. There will be a meeting to discuss the strategic plan, which is assignment 16-016 to Finance, and Council President Arnold will talk more on that in a moment, but that'll be on the 21st. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Prohl. Any other, yes, Mr. Hines?
I see the purpose has two items on tonight's agenda. Number three, which I think handles assignment 16-119 on the list, is an authorization to agree with Branston and Carroll to conduct a feasibility study of the city's facilities. And that'll be the third reading, and I think it's just something we need to do in conjunction with that strategic plan and all that. Second item is curb side recycling program, item number four, which I think handles item 17-025, and it'll go, this will be second reading, it'll go for three tonight, next time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hines. Any other reports from committees? Yes, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, President Arnold. Human Resources does not have any items on tonight's agenda, but reporting out on the special assignment, special committee assignment 16-079, special committee for the issue of looking at nondiscrimination, there will be a meeting on the 23rd in council chambers at 6:30. And on 16-102, there, that should be on the city council regular agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Yes, Mrs. Corcoran.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Parks and Recreation Committee has assignment 17-103 to grant use of the Arcanji Park and certain streets for the annual J.C.'s Evenings Lions Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 28, 2017. And at the appropriate time, I'll ask to waive the three-read rule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Corcoran. Any other reports from committee? Not seeing any, we'll move on with our meeting this evening. And the camera is resetting itself, so it's going to pan all over the room. At this time, we do have our reports from our officials, and Mayor, welcome back, or Mayor Luke.
Thank you, President Arnold. Starting with tonight's agenda items, the three items that are up for third read, I would encourage councils to vote on all three of those items. I'd also support Councilman Prohl's request on item six for waiver of the three-read rule. As discussed at committee, this is a combination of several types of bills with various vendors, and as the year draws to an end, we want to make sure we get those vendors paid. Same for item number seven. And item number eight, which is working with ODOT, continue to keep that relationship positive, if we could waive that tonight as well. Then moving on, at the last council meeting, and a lot on Facebook, I just want to make sure everybody's aware, we had a lot of good feedback on our proposed trick-or-treat time, just want to make sure everybody's aware, it's October 31st, that's Halloween, it's Tuesday, and it will start at 6 o'clock, we go into 7:30, 6 o'clock to 7:30 on October 31st. We appreciate all the feedback from the community, and that's, that's the official time. Follow-up on Councilman Tattman's report on Second Street, we'll keep a close eye on the condition of those bricks, and we will be taking measures in interim to make sure that that road is safe, which will include lowering the manhole covers, which provide a bit of an obstacle right now, and keeping a close eye so that there's no rapid deterioration and be ready in the event that there is. Sort of a trial run for us, we suspect that there are other streets in the downtown area that are paved, and we had such great feedback from those citizens that we suspect that on other downtown streets, we might get the same feedback. So appreciate the patience of those people on Second Street as we work through this topic. Commenting on item number four, there were some communications over the last couple of weeks regarding the emergency language, which is included in item number four. Former Council President Eric Reinhardt posed the question of how and why the language was added. I offered my response, and he offered some good points about reasons that it could possibly be removed, which I initially agreed with. It was related to the possibility of referendum. I misunderstood, I suppose, the nature of the request, thinking that if emergency language was included, there could be no referendum at all. Councilman Fosson offered a helpful email that I think cleared some of those things up, for me, anyway. And so my recommendation would be to remain, leave the emergency language in. I certainly believe we should keep this at three reads, which will give us another two weeks for reading. But the nature of the program is such that getting it up and running is heavily reliant on significant grant funds, which is heavily dependent on getting it done in this calendar year. And as the year draws to an end, we want to give ourselves as much cushion as we can. I don't think that leaving that language in precludes the possibility of a referendum any time in the future, but I believe if I understood Councilman Fosson correctly, it doesn't delay really any possibility of a referendum either. So when it becomes time, or if it becomes a topic of conversation for council, my suggestion and recommendation support would be for leaving that language in. Essentially, it's just a matter of can you spend money on day one, or do you have to wait 30 days? And then I have an announcement about an exciting event, which is this Sunday night. It is at the Majestic Theater, 7:30 PM. It is a presentation by a renowned urban planner and development expert, his name is Robert Gibbs, he's written, he's written a book on basically urban retail planning. I know that might not sound like the most exciting topic, but I can assure you it will be. We've had a lot of help from a former Chillicothe, well, Chillicothe native and former resident, Michael Watkins, who is also an expert in this field. Michael has arranged to bring experts from the National Town Builders Association, whose national conference is in Cincinnati this coming week. Six or seven of them are going to come up this weekend, there's going to be a talk this Sunday night, and then on Monday, they're going to tour the city and offer some recommendations. So as we continue to see a revitalization downtown, this is really a neat opportunity for us. I encourage anybody who is interested in the planning of a city, or the development of a city, or just for something interesting on a Sunday night to attend, there will be a reception at the poorhouse following the lecture, and it is free. So again, Robert Gibbs speaking this Sunday night at 7:30, I encourage any and all to attend. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Feeney. Our auditor is unavailable, I do say this, I understand. Law director is here, Ms. Rutherford, do you have anything to report?
I do, thank you, President Arnold. Just with respect to item number five, the use of the Arcanji Park for the J.C.'s Evening Lions Parade, just a reminder that any time we have events like this, it's very important to obtain indemnification of city and insurance certification for these type of events. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Corcoran for following through on this for us.
Thank you. Thank your office for helping out.
All right, thank you very much. I want to announce, as Mr. Prohl hinted towards, or said something earlier, about starting a strategic planning dialogue. I've gotten in touch with everybody in council, plus department heads and everybody, and I've gotten feedback from everybody that this, not this Saturday, but a week from this Saturday, on October 21st, everybody's available. We cut down the original time to nine to 11, so, because people had other things to do on that Saturday, so we're still, we're still going to go with it. It'll get us started, which is the first place to go, it's the first step forward. And so it'll be Saturday, October 21st, since there is, hoping to have it in another venue other than here in chambers, but since it is only a two-hour meeting, we are going to, I think for convenience and not having to set up and everything in another location, that here in chambers is where we're going to have it. So here in chambers, October 21st, nine to 11, we're going to start our, start our strategic planning discussions. And I encourage anybody that has any information that they're going to put forward to this, please do. That's all I have to offer for this evening. At this time, we move on to audience participation. We have implemented a sign-in sheet, which I have here, for your participation, however, and if I call your name and address, all you have to do is come up to the microphone. If you haven't signed the sign-in sheet, you're still more than welcome to talk, although we have your address on here, if you do come up to the microphone without being on the sheet, you do need to give your name and address. Rule 21 does limit each speaker to five minutes, and any subject a total of 15 minutes as far as discussion on any one subject. As you get close to your five-minute time allotment, I will, about one minute, put my finger up in the air and try to catch your attention and wave it at you, so you can try to summarize, summarize your presentation. So anybody that wants to speak is welcome too, and I'll start going down the list. First person I have on the list right now is Eric Reinhardt.
Yeah, thank you, President Arnold, thank you, council. First off, I want to thank you guys for your service. This is the first time I've ever been on the opposing, or not opposing, but the other side of this fence, and I've always said since I got on years ago, you guys had the hardest job in politics locally, lowest paid overwork. So with that, I want to thank you guys for your continued service to our community. I'm here in opposition of the recycling program, and I'll get into a little bit of details here in just a second. But basically, first off, I want to thank you guys though for bringing the recycling back, and bringing that to the forefront. I was on council, unfortunately, the years when we were in dire financial straits, and the program had to be cut long because of lack of participation and then just lack of funding. I mean, we just could not afford to do it, we were laying plates and firefighters off at the time, and we just couldn't do it. So now times are a little bit more robust, we've had the tax increase, we've had the garbage fee increase from 10 to 15. So we are doing much, much better financially, which is, which is great. It's a worthwhile cause, the goals of the program are admirable, decrease tip fees, save money in the city, decrease refuse in the landfill, absolutely great concepts, good for the environment. I want to thank council for going and pursuing these grants. I understand that grants aren't easy to come by, they weren't the last time I sat in Bruce's chair, they're still not now, so the startup grant funds are excellent. No one's saying, us folks that are, that are opposed to this, we're not opposed to recycling, we're not opposed to the re-institution of curb side recycling, we're opposed to this, this proposal for a couple of, for a couple of reasons, a couple of points. First and foremost, and I've had these discussions, I think, with Mayor Feeney, with Mr. Clay before he left, was that really when you guys started this program, there was not an actual feasibility study done, there was not a survey done, there was not something that said, is this something the community wants? Have we identified the people that, that want to participate, the people that are currently participating, those aren't, why aren't you? What fee would you be willing to, to take on if we were going to re-institute this? So I think we, we started off at a point, we did not have, you know, good set data that we could make, that we can make decisions moving, moving that forward. With that, not having that data, we, we don't, you know, you don't know who want to participate and who's not. I'm sitting here as a concerned taxpayer. My biggest opposition to the people that, that I have talked to, and there is, we have petitions that we find it's not that informal, it's just we were going out and getting feedback, and we've got about 150 signatures now, so I think some of the debate there where you guys, I've heard, have heard nothing but overwhelming love and adoration for it, kind of, I've just heard the opposite. So I think kind of you probably meet in the middle, it's probably about, you know, probably about 50/50 would be my guess, but again, we didn't do a feasibility study, so we don't know. Is the fact that this fee, I just think at this point in time, in light of the fact that we just, and I signed into law in Bruce's chair, the 10 to 15, that was a 33% increase in the garbage fee. My understanding, looking at the city's budget, since the institution of that, that increase in that garbage fee, we now have a significant carryover in that line item to the, to the tune of, since it was instituted, about $2.5 million of surplus, and 2,000 budget alone, it looks like there's an additional $370,000 that, that, I don't know where it's at. Again, I'm not making an accusation, I'm just saying, that's $370,000 in the current refuse fee, that again, if we're going to institute this program, which I'm not against, before we institute another fee on the taxpayers, I, I think for year one, we should go with the money that we've already got, that we've already, that we've already taken. Our citizens are overtaxed. I sat, and, and we approved that tax levy, I fought for that before I got off council, and I'm glad it was, the streets are getting paid, the fire stations are open, but that was a self-opposed 25% tax increase that our citizens are adjusting to now. That's a lot of money. That additional fee of the garbage fee, that they, we didn't vote on that, we did that in this room here, and it was needed at the time, there was no doubt about that. The garbage department at that time was actually losing money, that's not the way to run the garbage department. But now, if, if we are having a significant surplus, my biggest problem is imposing another fee or tax. If, if somebody's not willing or wanting to do this, they're going to get imposed that upon them no matter what. I think, I think it would, I think it would do us well to go back and, and take out of this current ordinance, that fee, which I can afford, most of you guys can afford as well, but there are citizens out there, especially out of your home health, you guys know, I see a lot of working poor, I see a lot of poverty poor. That is a lot of money to a lot of people, and it's, and it's being imposed around the board regardless, when, when it looks like there might be some money initially for startups that we could go ahead and fund through the current garbage fee. So I'd also ask that you would remove that fee for this year and fund it that way, but I'd also like to ask, one second, Bruce?
No, you're okay.
Thank you.
You're okay.
For, for an additional amendment that you guys could put in, that I think would, would convey some of the fears that some of us have that are on the other side of this item right now. And one is, okay, once this, this fee's set up and this program's up and rolling, that it's just going to be like any other government big program, that it's just going to be out there, it's going to be going, and it's going to be done in perpetuity without, with no foresight. So one thing I would like you guys to consider is a simple amendment to this, whenever you would want to do it, that would basically say, we as council, we're going to review this program on a yearly basis, not just within a budget, but we're going to review this program, and we're going to reauthorize it by a vote of council each and every subsequent year. So the two things I'm asking you guys to consider, again, is remove, remove the fee right now, look into that garbage budget that does have that significant surplus, if you do have to go with the fee later, you might have to, I don't know, but this first year on this, I would actually do that, and then ask for that simple amendment to basically assure the taxpayers that this isn't going to be a boondoggle that goes on indefinitely, and I hope it succeeds, I, I, trust me, I really do, but that you guys will kind of hold your own feet to the fire, review and reauthorize this program on a yearly basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. And the second person I have here on the list is Mr. Jacob McNeely.
First of all, I'm going to do this a little bit different. Thank you all for coming tonight, I've sat in on a lot of council meetings, me and Connie and the news guy. It's nice to see a crowd. You ought to come to some of the town hall meetings, they're bigger and gaudy, here, Luke could tell you that. Anyway, to start my speech off tonight, first thing I want to bring up is paving. I want to thank Dave for getting this started, paving's going pretty good, I think, the streets are improving. The thing that I bitched about at council meetings is, is waived, the KLA is going around and tearing up the streets and patching them. Go over on Delano Avenue right now, brand-new paving job, from Western Avenue to Mill Street, I want to report, make sure you get this down, because I've had this happen before, I want to report one of the largest potholes in the city of Chillicothe, it's only a half block long. Go over and take a look, it's a half a block long, they're patching it up. One big pothole, new street, they're all over the town. Why are we paying for this? They need patched properly. Second thing I want to bring up, we've got a new guy in the second ward. Monday, we had tons of concrete trucks going up vehicles, big construction trucks, bulldozers being carried up and down there flying, 40, 50, 60 miles an hour. I called them, complained to them, tow pack, all of them, nothing happened, they still flew. Nothing happened, they still flew. Went back Friday, I'm over there working. Same thing, all day long, complained to them. You know what their answer is? We're not allowed to use the back access to Yeebles Orchard. Is that a back access for construction equipment? Mr. Arnold was up there, he could probably answer that. But their answer back to me is, we've been told we're not allowed to use that access anymore. Why not? We're the one paying for the paving of the streets. So we're going to pave all of Yeebles again? It's been paved three times since I've lived here. My street's been paved once in 37 years. So let's get realistic. I'll tell you what, they don't slow down the trucks. This is something that came up at a town hall meeting. There was four of us residents there, mayor knows that. We asked that intersection there at Warwick and Fairway be made into a four-way stop. I hope it gets assigned to Dave's committee and put a four-way stop there to slow these trucks down. Because try to stop a concrete truck, but then you're going to get kicked. I want to see you do it, you can't do it. Tree permits, who in the world's in charge of this anymore? You ask different people at the city. I don't know. I'd like to know, where do you go about tree permits? There's an ordinance on that. The camera in the park, I complained about having cameras in the park and down to the trash dump for six to eight months, nothing was ever done, until a 15-year-old girl got raped in the city park, and they finally let out the contract. Been sitting there for six months at $18,000. How much is $18,000 for a girl's getting raped? Think about it. That is something that should have been done six months ago when I bitched about it. Every meeting I bitched about, at town hall meetings. It's ridiculous. The hookers are everywhere. It's time to put some more raids out there. Recycling, I agree with Ricky. I've recycled for over 25 years. I'm a firm believer in recycle. I do it all the time. I'll never change. But I have a problem with the fee. I've always said that $5, we pay more than enough, we shouldn't be charged anymore for this. And as far as this thing that come up in the paper I read, said, well, the container's 95 gallon, but it's not as big as a 30 gallon. Well, 30 gallon fits into 95, three times math, I get plus. I don't know how you get it, that's the way it works, but I got to tell you one thing, I got gravel driveway and you go pull a 95 gallon now. Tote across there, I want to see you do it. So when I get my tote, that'd be parked out there by the street because I've recycled for 25 years. The other thing is, the, like I say, this fee has got to stop. I agree with Eric. I'm a big recycler. And I got, one other thing that I want to talk about is, when we closed down the service department's draw, they were on Riverside. People's work there every day since it was supposed to be closed. They're still working there. They have since day one, when they moved them out in the fads. But the famous last words, I'll never forget, right here in council, that was all told. The service department will be out of the park by April the 1st. They're all still there, we're still working on Riverside Street. What happened to that? If I was a council member, I'd be standing on the desk yelling at the demonstration.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. The next person I have on the list to talk is Mrs. Nanvorhees.
Thank you, Council President Arnold and all the council members. I was here at last council meeting and spoke about the Children's Services levy, and I'm here again just to do the same. It is a levy that has been in existence for a long time. It's a renewal levy, it is not an additional. It is for abused, neglected, and dependent children. And I volunteered to chair that, and am fighting to make sure that it gets passed. I was a former foster parent and an adoptive parent, and I've had a long association with the Children's Services Agency. And I don't think you'll find any harder workers in the town than those social workers who work every single day trying to unify and keep together families and make sure that children are safe. I'm hoping that council will see fit to endorse this as a positive thing for our community. In addition, we do have a lot of children, a lot more, that are being in our care, not my care, but in the care of Children's Services because of the opioid addiction and other things that are, and other drugs that are harming families. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak again for that. I would also like to say that I endorse the recycling. I was involved with recycling years ago when we had it, and very disappointed that we had to abandon it. I was here and saw the size of the containers, which really are not that much of a cumbersome or burden. We had the opportunity to view those, I wish you would have been here for that. There have also been a lot of meetings that people could have participated in, that you all had, and so I think that the council, and I guess the thing that I feel so positive about is that you're a bunch of Republicans and Democrats, that you know what, in my visiting council, I see you working together. And is that, that is just so positive to me. And I believe that we will work this out, and I'm hopeful that we will pass the ordinance to have the recycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nanvorhees. Actually, we do have, we do have a committee assignment for us to sort of support towards our children's.
And see, the two of us can be friends.
We've been friends, 50 years.
And that's what it's all about, absolutely.
The next person I have on the list is Greg Kempton.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Greg Kempton, I'm mayor of the village of Waverly. I'm here tonight actually with Mr. Spencer, Mr. Foreman from Pycton. Just kind of, I will not speak long, actually, just here in support of their opposition of the on-site disposal. So at the Pycton plant, if everyone's aware of that, the Department of Energy's proposal is to bury one and a half million yards of low-level radioactive waste at the Pycton site. This is directly in Pycton's community, at a few miles away, it's way too close to Waverly, and to be honest, at what, 25 miles probably? I'd say it's too close to Chillicothe also. One of the big issues with it is the way the data was originally presented. It has been found to have been presented in a way that it does not meet the criteria to have been approved in the first place. So there is a push to have Department of Energy look at this again. Pycton has hired a professional to review the same exact data that Department of Energy's looking at. Realistically, there's a lot of problems, and I've heard the word "ideal site" thrown away, thrown around a lot. We're in Ohio with a lot of rainfall. We're sitting right on the Days Valley aquifer. That's where every one of us in there gets our drinking water. And if you look at kind of defined disposal sites for anything radioactive as far as material, up until this, I would have never even let's say Ohio was ideal, even looking at seismic activity charts and things. Their proposal is a plastic that'll, in theory, hold a thousand years. But with ground movement and everything, that's, there's no guarantee of that. Basically, several villages, well, communities, townships have signed on in support of Pycton's opposition of this. We're trying to bring some awareness further off and get the Department of Energy just look at it again. That's all I have for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Kempton. Actually, we do have a committee assignment to council right now to discuss that. The next person I have on my list is Billy Spencer. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to thank the Republicans for giving me just a few minutes, I'll take way less than a five minutes. I'm the mayor of Village Pycton, and in March of 2016, the village passed a resolution just asking for certain guarantees from the Department of Energy, which was, just some of those, was that they not bring any material from other facilities in the United States to Pycton, that they guaranteed the clean up of existing landfills and plumes that are on site. I've been on site myself 38 years, and those are pretty expensive. And the plumes, their underground plumes, those are migrating offsite as we speak. Those were created back in the early days when, I'm sure no one really knew, or if they did, they wasn't told, but if they had some bad stuff, they just basically threw it out the door on the ground. Of course, it sank in the ground, and now it's migrating with the water flow that we have in that area. We waited nine months, DOE never would answer us, so we hired the Ferguson Group out of Worthington, DC, to do independent third-party assessment to look at DOE's report. And the Ferguson Group, one of the things we asked for was DOE to give us a grant for $70,000, and we knew that figure because DOE give other communities money to do what we was asking. But they neglect, they just decided to ignore us, so we took our own money and hired the group out of DC. They looked over the DOE report to, "report" might not be a good word, but that's what I say. So it's their book that they come up with to, on the disposal cell, and it's over 4,000 pages thick. So I know what, I know what they thought, you know, no one from Pycton is certainly going to read this, and no one from Pycton, if they do read, is going to understand it. But we knew enough to hire someone who would, and using no more than their information, just their information, we found major problems. Deep fractures in the bedrock. And one of the more serious ones is the Toxic Substance Control Act, TOSCA, would basically says that the bottom of one of these cells has to be at least 50 feet from the high-water mark of an aquifer, or something like that. They're within 20 feet of this aquifer, and many places on this cell, it's 100 acres. You put 100 acres in the middle of Chillicothe, it's a big, big area. This thing is huge. And so, just this last Monday at our council meeting, we finally got DOE to admit, we have a place this big and it was lined up too deep around the walls, and people, they finally admitted in front of this crowd that there is fractures below the 20 feet that they said they would dig up. So they admitted that in the council meeting. And what we're here for is, is that aquifer. I'm no geologist or hydrologist or anything like that, a scientist. People tell me that, no, that aquifer starts in North Carolina and goes clear to Chicago. Up Pycton, here, up to Columbus, and then bears off, and goes to Chicago. It flows south to north. I did not know that, you know. But if that aquifer becomes contamin, yes, oh, if that aquifer becomes contaminated, you know, everybody from here to Chicago, from Pycton to Chicago, is at risk. And that's what we're doing here. Chillicothe is the, in South Central Ohio, Chillicothe is the dining and commerce center of our region. And you guys have a much bigger voice than Pycton does. You know, so far, DOE, although we get concessions from them more all the time, they kind of ignore us. We're getting louder, we're getting hard to ignore. Every elected county official, except the commissioners, and let me qualify that, have come out in opposition of this disposal cell. One of the county commissioners will probably never come out in opposition of it. The other two have asked DOE for a pause, that they pause till we can get to the bottom of this, the deep fractures and the TOSCA violation. So what I'm doing here is, is basically, it's no more than asking for Chillicothe's help. Your voice is louder than ours. You know, we have worked, our federal delegation hard. I will say Senator Brown is the most receptive to our calls. And I have a meeting next Wednesday with Speaker Rosenberg. But we need, we need this record decision reopened so we can have a honest, an open discussion and debate about this, because it really does affect, we're kind of at ground zero, but it does affect Chillicothe and everybody else. So I'm just asking for you guys to take it into consideration. I know Dennis was here at the last meeting, I'm not quite the dynamic Speaker Dennis is, but...
You're doing all right.
But we do need your help, and I know most political organizations or governing groups, one way or another, have been lobbying to support the on-site disposal cell. And one other thing real quick, I know that they've said, if we don't do this disposal cell, then we don't clean the site up. Well, Senator Brown, the one thing he did say is, is that the site will be cleaned up, whether you do it this cell or not, but it should be shipped off. But even with this cleaning up these landfills and plumes, these plumes are highly contaminated. No one really knows what's in the landfills. It's been put there since 53. Bad stuff, I'm sure, they brought up a contaminated plant in Huntington, West Virginia, and buried it in the middle of the night, okay? But they take, they want this dirt from these plumes because they have to have fill for the landfill. It's putting worse stuff on bad stuff. And, you know, does anyone really believe this cell will not live for 1,000 years? You know, even in their meetings, they said, well, that was just a human figure of time we came up with. People could understand that. Okay, you know, yeah, it probably sounds better than 20 years or 15 years, you know. So thank you for your time, and I hope you can keep us in consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spencer. Appreciate the information, and again, we have that in front of us now to discuss.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The next name I have on the list here is Bill Barnhart. You said I call you William, but you wrote Bill, so I'll call you Bill, is that okay?
I've lived in Chillicothe for the last 22 years at same address. I live in the East End. I don't believe some members of council and the mayor understands there's a big difference between the East End and the West End. East End is about 90% rentals. West End may be 10 to 20% rentals. So the curbside recycling isn't going to make the East End look any better until you get rid of the refrigerators, washers, dryers, TVs, hot water tanks, old air conditioners. That's what makes the East End look bad. And as far as the curbside recycling, y'all know I'm against it, and so is my wife. This has been the worst ordinance that come out of council since red light, yes, red light cameras. And I was here when they voted on it. Every member voted yes. The mayor was behind it. But once it got put on ballot, the people were 74 to 26 against it. And I have the same feeling that this is what's going to happen to the curbside recycling. The people do not want it, but the politicians do. And as far as putting that $1.95 in a special fund, I brought it up before, that I would put all the garbage fees in a separate account. We had our garbage trucks paid off because two years ago, we was making half a million dollars profit on our garbage bills. But you don't want to do that, you want to drop it all in a general fund so you can spend it any way you want. But you don't want to do that. You want to drop it all in the general fund so you can spend it any way you want. But the people pay the garbage bill, should only have that money spent on like city, the sweeper. We could have bought a new sweeper if that money would have went into a separate account. But nope, could have paid for two garbage trucks, dude. But you know what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. That's all the names that I have on my list. Anybody else like to speak, sir? If you would, just step forward, give us your name and your address, please.
It's Dennis Foreman, 115 Fifth Street, Pyton, Ohio, 45661. Couple of you wasn't here last time. I know you was on vacation in Germany, my big friends from Germany, so my nephew or my cousin's there now. And this is a good crowd. You know what? This is amazing. Our last meeting, we had a packed house. You know what's amazing about that is people are starting to pay attention. It's far too long for people being lazy and not getting up, whether you agree with it or you don't. I appreciate both you talking. But here's the one thing we can all agree on. Southern Ohio is getting beat up on. Let's just go down to Sodda County. None of us are from there. They're getting a bypass and some people think it's a blessing. Well, I'm scared to death. I went to Shawnee State University. I'm scared to death of those people. They have an opioid crisis that tried to reach Pyton. The mayor and I fought it. We did TV interviews. We stopped the drug house from coming to our town. I'm scared to death. I was going to get shot. His wife thought the same thing. It was owned by a felon. He was a felon, right, Mayor?
Mafia.
He was mafia, Mayor. I still think he was next on our backs. But the one thing we don't do in Pyton, we don't back down. We had contractors abuse us. We took them to the Supreme Court of Ohio and we won. Did we have to pay for it? Yes. But there's one thing we deserve in our town is respect, and I liked the article he did. I didn't talk to you about that article. But you know what? The articles that, last time I was here, was shared four hundred and forty-nine times from me coming up here and talking. So now they're going to reach out to you. I guarantee they're going to talk to every single one of you and tell you how crazy Dennis Foreman is. We know what? I guess being crazy nowadays is speaking out and speaking up for your town. Call me crazy because I'm going to speak up for my town. And guess what? I teach in Ross County. I do music festivals here. I've done lots of things at the Majestic Theater. Most of you people here, most of you people out here have seen me. I've seen you out. I've seen you before as well. I've seen a lot of you guys. So what I'm saying is, our last meeting was shared seven hundred and forty-four times from their paper. Seven hundred and forty-four times. That means people are paying attention. It means something to them. And you won't see too many people jumping up and down, oh, we want a nuclear waste dump. Now here's one number they're going to give you. Let me tell you what. They're going to your county commissioners. Oh, ninety-nine point seven percent is going to leave. Let me tell you what, they brought up almost thirty thousand canisters, how many canisters to bring up? How much? They're fourteen tons? They're biggest, from you to I, Mayor, I mean, they're bigger. A ton of them, right? That's their calculations they're trying to give to you guys to make us look like we're ignorant. Almost all that stuff is going into that waste cell. Last time I was here, I told you fourteen million dollars is what they spent in trailers. They didn't build an asset in our town. They didn't build anything in our town, did they, Mayor? Fourteen million dollars in trailers. They could have redone Pyton High School and put offices there. And guess what they'd had to do? Brought five hundred people out behind those gates and pay a tax to our town. We do not get taxes from DOE. We don't have like a factory like, you know, Glathell or Kenworth. And I'm not trying to dog you guys. I'm like, we heard in Southern Ohio. When they first come here, back in the fifties, you can look it up on the internet, May nineteen fifty-six, they bankrupt the city of Waverly. They had to borrow over six hundred thousand dollars for water. They bankrupt Pyton. They bankrupt every school. Wakefield High School did never open. So we're dealing with some people here. Sometimes it's, it's a little depressing growing up on forty-seven years old. They keep saying funding. Every year I've been alive, I remember being in high school, we might get funded. We might get funded. What? Are we not worth being funded? Pyton, Ohio kept the United States of America safe for what we sacrificed with thirty-eight hundred acres of our land that we do not get paid taxes for. Well, we have all this money. We'll come down to Southern Ohio on a Wednesday night, we call it White Collar Wednesday, and look at all the tags, the license tags from out of our state. How about hiring more people from Ross County and Pike County and Sodda County and even across the river from Kentucky? That's what upsets me a lot. But the worst thing is, we had to pay for a third-party assessment, a small village of Pyton, seventy thousand dollars. We could have done something. Well, we got a road right now collapsing. We can't get grant money for it. We'd love to have that money to fix that. But guess what? DOE took nine months to answer us. I always make the joke, I could have been with a lady who had a baby by now for you to tell me no. That was disrespectful to our town. I don't have nine months to answer a parent. If you have a bad grade, your kid got in trouble, I'd better tell you tonight or you're going to be on me. You'll be having me in that Chillicothe Gazette. But DOE gets allowed to go nine months without speaking to the village of Pyton. So when they come up here to your commissioners, I don't understand why they don't come down to Pyton and talk to us. Craig Butler, I said it in the newspaper and I'll say it in your minutes right now. Craig Butler, come down to our town and speak to us. Don't make a decision, also Ross County Commissioners, if you can hear this on this tape, don't make a decision for Pike County, Ohio, it's going to be a thousand years unless you're going to come down and talk to the village of Pyton. This is my land where I live. I don't come up here and disrespect you guys. I would back you up. If there's something going to affect Chillicothe, that's going to affect Pyton. And that's where most of us come up here to eat and go shopping, Christmas shopping. We spend our money in your town. You are the heart of Southern Ohio. But we are your neighbors. We are your friends. What I'm saying, these people right now with the fractures, I'm on the SSAB. They presented this at only twenty feet to all these members on the SSAB, which is Site and Sick Advisory Board. Eighty-five to ninety percent of those people work or have a contract at the plant. I'm one of the few people that don't. I brought that up to Mr. Rob Edwards. He's in charge of the Dukka and Pyton. So it's easy to agree with someone when you're on the payroll. So when you hear this SSAB and the information, they're coming up to the commissioners. The commissioners need to meet with us because DOE is going to feed you another story. And it's about time our story gets told. And I appreciate you guys for letting us speak because I'll tell you, I'm very passionate. I love my town. And I'm not going to let someone abuse our town. So if that makes me crazy, I'm guilty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Anybody else have anything they would like to add to the meeting this evening? Not seeing any. We'll move forward. We move into old business. Does anybody have any old business they would like to bring up?
No, I think we got, I, we gave, we went over the strategic meeting. Oh, yeah, I do want to excuse Pat.
Okay. I have a motion to excuse Pat, Patrick this evening, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on the motion to excuse Mrs. Patrick.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray. Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
We've excused Mrs. Patrick this evening. Any other old business to bring up this evening? Not seeing any. Petitions and correspondence received by a clerk. Do you have anything, Mr. Fawcett?
I do not, Mr. President.
Okay. We move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business they have to bring up this evening? Not seeing any new business. Moving on to committee assignments and meeting dates. I've already made the announcement for the strategic planning, which is going to be Saturday, October the twenty-first here in Chambers, nine to eleven. Does anybody else have any committee meetings at this time they'd like to announce?
I do.
Ms. Kearney?
Yes, I would like to announce that Monday at six-thirty, that we will be able to discuss the resolution of possibly opposing the placement of a nuclear cell in Pyton County. It will be discussed. And also I will have a couple of people who have done some research and attended. There's quite a number of meetings there too that will come in and give us some information.
Monday, that'd be the sixteenth.
Be the sixteen. That's correct.
Monday to sixteen, seven-thirty here in Chambers.
And also I would like to have a committee meeting on the children's services levy. Possible to have us supporting that and ensure that we will, kind of indicate that's very important.
Do that both the same night?
Same night.
Excellent. Any other meeting dates anybody has coming up? I'll run real quick to the committee assignments that we've gotten since our, since the last meeting. Engineering, and some of them are on tonight, some of them are already getting processed. Engineering, a request for review of the street surface options on West Second Street. And I think we got that told, what we're doing about that earlier. Community affairs, consideration of legislation to oppose, oppose the placement of the nuclear dump site at the Pyton facility. We talked about that. Request for legislation for the, to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the county commissioners for indigent defense. Human services, a request for legislation to hire a fall, winter, seasonal clerical person with prior appropriated money to help out in the administration office. Finance, request for legislation to appropriate five thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars to purchase and install LED lighting in the auditor and income tax offices. And community affairs, Mrs. Kearney again, request for legislation to show council support for the renewal of the tax levy for the children's services. And that's what we've had since last meeting. At this time, we move into our legislation. So, Mr. Fawcett, whenever you're ready, we will start out with item number one.
Third reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty-four hundred fifty-two dollars to update and coordinate all city departments onto the same email hosting service and declaring emergency. Third reading.
Third reading. Roll call on that legislation, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number two.
Third reading of an ordinance providing for the placement of stop signs at the intersections of Second Street and Mulberry Street and Fourth Street and Walnut Street, making these intersections within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, three-way stops, appropriating funds for the purchase of four solar-powered stop signs and declaring emergency. Third reading.
Excuse me. Roll call on that legislation, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three, please.
Third reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Branstad or Carroll Incorporated to conduct a feasibility study of the city's existing facilities, appropriating nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to cover the cost of said study and declaring emergency. Third reading.
Roll call on that legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four.
Second reading of an ordinance establishing a curbside recycling program within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, accepting the Ohio EPA grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the Ross Pickway Highland Fayette Solid Waste Management District grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, authorizing the acceptance of bids and bins and trucks, bids for bins and trucks, appropriating funds for bins and trucks, authorizing the hiring of two recycling program positions, establishing a fee of a dollar ninety-five for the recycling service and setting aside twenty-five cents of said fee for capital expenditures and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
And that will move on to read at the next meeting. Item number five.
First reading of a resolution granting use of the Octanty Park and certain city streets for the annual JC's and Evening Lion's Halloween parade on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes, President Arnold, at this time, I would like to ask that we waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on that motion, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And now roll call on the legislation, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating fifty-one thousand dollars from unappropriated general funds and fourteen thousand dollars from unappropriated street construction maintenance to pay various bills, expenses, and budget adjustments, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Croll.
I would like to ask at this time that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Kearney. Roll call on that motion, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
We've waived the three-read rule. Roll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating thirty-five hundred dollars to pay state of Ohio building permit fees for the remainder of the twenty-seventeen calendar year and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Tattner.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Number seven and eight, you want me to waive?
Yes, please.
At this time, I'd like to request that we waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
The motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number eight.
First reading of the final resolution enacted by the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, here and after referred to as the legislative authority or local public agency in the matter of the stated described project and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Tattner.
Yes, I'd like to request to waive the three-read rule, number...
Eight.
Eight.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on that motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Croll.
Yes.
Tattner.
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Number nine.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the Chillicothe Municipal Court Probation Fund to purchase software and implement a new probation program, hire one temporary worker for initial data entry, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florina.
Thank you, President Arnold. Reflecting my report to committee, I would like to have a motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion.